All right. Good morning. Well, now that Representative McGordy has settled into a seat, that's a good indication we can begin. So we're going to call to order this Tuesday meeting, public hearing of the Public Safety and Security Meeting. I know it's a busy day in the building today. It seems like with President's Day yesterday, every committee scheduled an 11 o'clock something today. So we certainly do not take offense if anybody has to step out and vote. And for the public, it's when folks step out, it's not because they're disinterested, it's because some of their other committees are taking votes or having hearings as well. So we have a pretty efficient agenda today. And we're going to kick off with the Department of Administrative Services. I'd like to welcome the Commissioner and the Deputy Commissioner to join the committee. So please. Make sure you put your mics on.
Yeah.
And welcome ma'am.
Good morning. Good to see you all here today. For the record, I'm Michelle Gilman, Commissioner of the Department of Administrative Services, and I'm joined by Deputy Commissioner Darren Hobbs, who oversees our real estate and construction services team at DAS. Thank you so much for having us here. We are here to testify on two bills, one Senate Bill 1320, and the other one is House Bill 6965. I will summarize, but we'll start by again thanking Senator Gaston, Representative Boyd, Senator Chicarella, Representative Howard, and distinguished members of the Public Safety and Security Committee. We do thank you for raising Senate Bill 1320, which is an act implementing the recommendations of the Department of Administrative Services regarding acting building officials, certain parking spaces, and elevator certificates of operation. Senate Bill 1320 does offer several changes to statutes to support municipalities, increase electric vehicle charging stations for persons with disabilities, and close a loophole regarding the safe operation of elevators. We're happy to provide additional background regarding these various provisions, but we do believe strongly that they will assist municipalities, particularly with the provision around acting building officials. And that's based on feedback that we've heard from building officials themselves, our conversations with the building official organizations, and then certainly municipalities as well, especially where we're seeing a shortage of trained building officials across the state. And then Section 2 goes into some provisions around accessible EV parking spaces, and we've got some additional details around that provision and proposal. And then Section 3 around continuing elevator and escalator safety and the renewals of certificates for those spaces. And we know we often hear from many of our legislators regarding elevator safety and operations of those within public housing, private housing, and other spaces. So happy to take questions on any of the provisions, but know in particular, elevators and escalators are often a subject that you hear from your constituents and property owners and others. So we thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony and urge passage of Senate Bill 1320. And then I just do want to comment briefly on House Bill 6965. We appreciate the proponents of the bill and proposing many of the concepts here. We are respectfully opposed to Section 1 of the bill regarding the state fire marshal. We have provided detailed testimony regarding that and how the measures proposed in this would conflict with current practice around the appointed level of the state fire marshal and how Connecticut general statutes governs appointed officials. So again, happy to take questions on that as well, but appreciate, again, you considering our testimony on both of these bills before you. Again, happy to take any questions and appreciate your commitment to this important work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate, we appreciate your testimony and your good communication always with your department. You are right, we get a lot of questions about elevators and escalators, and it's not always our go-to kind of knowledge base here. So we appreciate you kind of jumping into that type of thing. Just kind of quickly on House Bill 6965, I think probably later on, we'll hear from some of the proponents who will make the argument about how it kind of mirrors what they're proposing mirrors what is kind of practice at the local level with all of that. You know, is there, is there some way to kind of meet in the middle perhaps? Because I think they're viewing the state fire marshal a little differently than perhaps some other appointees, since it is a fairly high-profile, you know, kind of position in that. And I think they're just looking for making sure that cause is there. So I don't know if you want to kind of, you know, almost opine a little bit on what likely will be their testimony later on this, on this bill.
Sure. You know, generally, the state of Connecticut has numerous appointed positions across state government, many who are subject matter experts in their field. But having that flexibility as an appointed level also brings to bear, you know, that high-level nature for the position and the ability for the appointing authority to recruit a manager that serves the position of the appointing authority. And we have a building of, you know, our building official, our state building official, that's an appointed level at DAS, our state fire marshal, and there are hundreds of other appointed officials, whether it's in the legislative branch, executive branch, and judicial branch. And so I think within our system of government, whether again, it's higher ed or the other branches of government, you have various levels of employment, whether it's a classified bargain service, unclassified managers, or again, appointed officials. And so I think it has served DAS well and our state well to have, you know, those various levels of appointments and to offer flexibility. What is standard, though, is with regard to any level of employment, there's always an opportunity for due process. And I've made sure certainly in my agency that that always exists, no matter what the circumstances for personnel matters. These decisions, decisions around personnel are not made lightly, and there is a process that is followed, whether again, that's at DAS or in any other executive branch agencies. So I feel confident that that system works and that process is in place. And state government does run differently than, you know, local government or other segments of government. But I think, you know, again, it has worked for the agency, and there are various checks and balances in place when it comes to these appointed level positions.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. And just kind of lastly, when it comes to the proposal about the deputy state fire marshal, is there, is there somebody currently holding that role? Is that a role that's actively filled? Is that vacant?
Thank you for that question. So the deputy fire marshal has not been a position that's been, that has had an incumbent for many, many years. But this is a position that DAS is currently looking at recruiting for and filling. We just had a new incumbent for fire marshal begin. So Lori Volker is our chief state fire marshal for the state of Connecticut. And as we look at organizing that office in a stronger, more robust way, we believe that the position of deputy fire marshal would serve us well, serve our agency well, and most importantly, serve the state well. So we're presently working on updating the classification of the deputy fire marshal. It has not been reviewed in some time. And then we'll work with OPM to ensure that we can move that position forward, that we have the funding for that position. But we're very focused on moving forward on that position, which does exist in statute now, but again, hasn't been filled in some time. But we think there's great value in moving forward on a deputy role, not only to support the fire marshal specifically, but also serve as a backup, you know, when he or she is out, and to be able to sign off on, you know, various code procedures or code standards or other things. So there's a lot of value, again, to having a deputy in place.
Thank you. And I think Lori's been off to a great start.
Thank you.
And we'd be interested as you reevaluate that whole office, the workload, and what it should be structured like. So I think we want to make it efficient. So questions from members of the ranking member, Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, good morning. One quick question, going back to 1320, the home builders, I don't know if you saw their testimony?
Yes.
They're looking for 15 days. Any opposition to that?
So I'll ask Darren to comment on that. He's had more of our conversations.
Thank you.
Their building officials.
Okay.
And is a building official by trade. I don't know if I mentioned that earlier, but pleased to recognize him.
Good morning, chairs and distinguished members. Thank you for the question. 15 days is a fairly short time period. And one of the challenges we've heard from our municipal partners is that the time it takes to put an incumbent in place temporarily would be probably longer than those 15 days, maybe even longer than the 30 days due to their own local processes. So 30 days coincides with the period of time that's in code right now for the time that a building official has to review an application and issue a permit or deny a permit. So that was why that date was chosen. I don't know that we have an objection to go into a shorter period. I just don't know if it would be effective in practice.
Right. So that's sort of my question. So if, if I apply for a building permit today, and the building official goes out, doesn't approve it in a week, and then he goes out, and they have 30 days, they're not appointing anybody, my building permit is not going to get approved or denied in 30 days, right?
Correct.
Right. So, and that's just sort of my, when they asked to go back to 15, and I think you're right, you know, because I think how most municipalities work, they're not going to start that process until they have to, right? So I think if we could start it at 15, we're probably end up at 30 anyway. I'd just hate to see projects, especially we talk about housing and whatnot, the need for it in this state to be held up, because as I'm sure you know, it goes in stages. So if I miss this inspection, and now the contractor who was supposed to come in next can't because the inspection's not done, can't put the sheet rock up, so to speak, because they haven't inspected the insulation, now that contractor gets pushed out, and it may be two months before you can get them back. So that's why I asked. I mean, it seemed like a reasonable ask. I mean, it's a couple of weeks, but just to try to keep projects, building projects moving in the state. No objection, though? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you both for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative McGordy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner. I just want to speak briefly on the Bill 6965. I'm a little disappointed that you oppose that bill. It is a broken system. It's been broken since Governor Malloy had changed the fire marshal from public safety into DAS. And it's, this is something I've been talking about here for 10 years. I am a certified state fire marshal. When I went to certification class, I went to the public safety building on Country Club Road, which was all done by troopers with people with respect and dignity. And I went there, and I learned a lot. And then I saw gradually change into these firefighters in uniform. Okay, they're dressed up. They go out, they do inspections, they call the state in, somebody from your department, the state fire marshal's office comes, and they're dressed like they went fly fishing. They don't wear the badge, they don't wear the uniforms, they don't look like public safety. They need to be in public safety. That's where they belong. When the fire investigation unit and the state fire marshal separated their ways, those guys were on an island. They didn't know which way to go because they now are police officers, they're not fire investigators. They had issues getting insurance records and phone records during investigations. So that was a problem. We had to fix it. I feel that the fire marshals are public safety, and I need, they need to go back there. And I know that you have them under your control now, but I don't think it's working. Nobody respects the state fire marshals like they used to be. They came down to town, people stood at attention, the signs of the Gaston Station said, per voter of the state fire marshal, people looked at that. They saw our fire marshal right now is home at night, watching TV and sees, oh, there's a structure fire, and the state fire marshal is investigating it. They don't even know, because they've taken them out of public safety. That's not right. We need to get them back. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the committee? All right. I thank you both for your time, and I appreciate all the good communication in between as we work through this. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Senator Tony Wong, the distinguished senator from Fairfield.
Thank you, Chairman Gaston, Chairman Boyd, and ranking members Howard and Chicarella, and all the esteemed members of the Public Safety Committee. Having been a former ranking and chair, it is one of the terrific committees and a collaborative effort. So I'm honored to testify in front of you. I am State Senator Tony Wong, representing Fairfield, Easton, Newtown, and Bethel. I am testifying in support of Senate Bill 1319, an act establishing a cybersecurity task force. Before I begin, I want to thank this committee's leadership for raising this bill. Many years passed and seeing the wisdom and the need to have passed this bill. This is a reconvening of asking for a task force that had expired, and unfortunately was not able to do the important work that this committee felt was appropriate and necessary. And it is addressing the issue of cybersecurity. I think as technology has significantly and dramatically evolved with the dual combination, cybersecurity has always been an issue as we use the internet and technology. But now with the onset of AI's proliferation, I think the duality of it has created a far greater urgency and a significant impact on the lives of many people in this country beyond Connecticut and our local municipalities. When you think about the potential of national terrorism that could impact our infrastructure, our military installations, our financial services that have dramatic impact, our utilities. So it is a high potential. We've seen many incidences, in fact, the most recent Colonial Pipeline, that would dramatically impact our ability to get energy resources. That could all be significantly impacted. When we talk about cybersecurity, think about the fact that anytime, anytime that we're using our computers, using our mobile phones, it is compact and potentially impacted, I meant to say. And so the duality of AI and cybersecurity has created a far greater urgency to revisit this task force. So we talk about national security and the terrorist act, that is a high potential, but also on our state and municipalities. What's been remarkable, as an advocate of this bill for many years, I have heard many stories of our local municipalities that had been subject to ransomware and had paid that ransom. And by statutory requirements and criminal requirements, they're not needed to report that. And we have seen that happen. The most flagrant case of our municipal ransomware attack was on the city of Atlanta, Atlanta, Georgia, where the city refused to pay the ransomware, and the entire ecosystem, from school buses, public safety, traffic lights, every aspect of safety in our community were compromised and held at bay. I think the third component that I would address on cybersecurity, beyond the national terroristic aspects, as well as municipal and state government, is personal. How many of us have had been subject to spamware and bots, and also the erasure of information? We talked a lot in regards of this General Assembly about AI and data privacy and invasion of that. But we don't address it from a standpoint of cybersecurity prevention, that your data out there is into the cyberspace, and your privacy, as well as your financial security and personal security and healthcare data could be compromised. So again, I ask for this committee to reconvene the AI cybersecurity task force, just cybersecurity, but it's intertwined with AI. Now, you would ask, why is it important for this committee of cognizance to have and to legislate a cybersecurity task force when we could possibly convene one, just to address the critical issues in the marketplace? I asked that question myself. And the reality is, I would prefer an asking the cognizance committee to be able to put weight behind this request, to have the best and the brightest minds in our state and nationally, from the committee of cognizance, to say, this is relevant, so that we can tap the expertise of our military operations in the state, financial services, to be sure that they are participating in giving us the highest and best use of information. So for me, this task force has dictated by a statutory requirement, gives far, far greater weight to this. And I can't say enough to thank the leadership of this committee for passing this bill in years past and seeing the validity of it. So ultimately, I think it's important to raise the issue, but I think more than anything else, it's an opportunity to have a conversation about what cybersecurity is. We have heard all over the news about AI, AI proliferation and its impact, data privacy and social media. But cybersecurity is the crux of maintaining the protection of our community, our state, as well as our national defense. And we don't pay enough attention to it. I ask for the committee to consider passage of this, and I'm happy to ask any additional questions. We must realize that this state had the tremendous benefit of Mr. Arthur House, who was the first cybersecurity czar established by Governor Malloy, the first in the country. And in fact, one of the things that I've learned from Mr. House is the fact that Connecticut was on the forefront of cybersecurity advocacy, even beyond the federal government. To this date, the federal government has not established a dedicated cybersecurity analysis. We've been piecemeal. And I want to close by thanking the Department of Public Safety and their law enforcement activities and expertise, as well as Mr. Freeman, the CIO in the state of Connecticut. They have done great work, and it is an opportunity to have them as part of a cybersecurity task force to learn and share the best practices to protect our state and community. Thank you, and be happy to ask any questions. And thank you for the chair's indulgence.
Yeah, thank you, Senator. And actually, I think this bill was the last bill to pass the House at midnight last session. So but I guess, you know, trying to put a task force together and staff it is always one thing. At the end of the day, what's the end goal, right? So this task force meets, you know, what do you envision the next step would be after they meet? A permanent group, some type of building on the Fusion Center that DESP runs already with the work that the Guard has been doing? Kind of, you know, where would you, assuming it gets together, where do you see it going?
Well, I think it is important. And indeed, I remember it was the last bill, and many thanks to the leadership of this committee for believing in it. But unfortunately, it never got a chance to convene. And to answer that question, you're absolutely right. Establishing the task force would allow us to have the expertise from a wide ranging of available knowledge and insight and world-class cybersecurity expertise within our own state and throughout this country, and to be able to complement with the Fusion cybersecurity and the expertise that we have. But I think the other part is to give credibility and to give an awareness and education to the general public. Having been a member of the AI working group and being familiar, we have brought forth in legislative proposal, as well as much dialogue from cross ranges of expertise on AI, and to the point that there was a bill being facilitated, did not pass. But that level of transparency, that level of legislative leadership in being informed and getting the best practices is critical. The fact that we don't have that right now as a legislative governmental practice, when you really tap into, as I've learned, and as being a past chair of the committee, when you talk to our utilities, when you talk to our national defense, from Sikorsky, from Pratt Whitney to Electric Boat, their level in sophistication against cybersecurity and terrorist encroachment is world-class. And why are we not, as a state, recognizing some of that to be able to share with Connecticut-based businesses? And that's what the goal is, is for us And that's what the goal is, is for us to learn, develop and learn from the expertise that exists in this state already, as well as in the country, because of the weight of cognizance of this committee and the Legislative General Assembly, to bring the best practices so that we can be best prepared. It's not an issue of if the state of Connecticut and this country and any individual and municipalities will experience cybersecurity attacks that impacts their ability to do business and live day-to-day as usual. It's an issue of when and would not be better for us as a proactive entity to get the best practices, educate awareness and ensure it doesn't happen. So to your point, it is important to convene it and to do it in a bipartisan, bicameral basis because ultimately, when anyone, you talk to anyone who's had their lives turned upside down, whether it be an individual, whether it be a business, whether it's the concern of terrorist act against our country, we don't ask about it afterwards. It's too late. Let us be proactive. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Questions from Representative Howard.
Thank you. Good morning, Senator. And I know this has been a priority of yours that you worked on for a long time. I'm looking at the bill and the bill pushes this out to the task force should submit a report by January 1st, 2026. So the reality, as you know, this bill makes it through. It's probably going to pass late May, early June, by the time makes it through, you know, both chambers and whatnot. I just don't know if that amount of time, six months, is enough to convene the working group or the task force, have them do the extensive work that they have to do to determine what's going on already in the state with 169 towns, with the state agencies, even perhaps with, you know, some of our utility providers, et cetera, determine what each is doing and if there's legislative action needed to try to consolidate that or make it more efficient. I just don't know if that's enough time and I'm just curious, how you feel if we were to change 2026 to 2027, which would give the new legislature in 2027 with a new budget, the benefit of 18 months of research, collaborative work to determine what, if anything, needs to be done with that new session?
Thank you, Representative Howard. And indeed, as per the last vote in the legislative session, I want to thank the House Chairs and Rankings for their leadership on this. No doubt, I mean, this was a change of date from actually 2025, 24. We moved it to 26. 27 is absolutely fine, but I think it continues to be an ongoing work in progress. It should not just stop at the issuance of a report. I think cybersecurity is pervasive and prevalent in our lives and that combination of AI proliferation. And who knows what the next level of technology is? But one thing that cybersecurity is focused on is protecting against criminal activity, against our state, against our federal government and our individuals. I think that is a constant, ongoing basis. I think this, I hope, is a start of collaboration using the best practices, the best talent that we have in the expertise against cybersecurity and raising awareness. But no doubt, changing it to 27 is fine, but I think the tallest task, if this committee was, this bill was to pass, is to have all the legislative leadership that formed this nomination to begin to work on this. Because at the end of the day, again, it needs to be an ongoing solution-driven awareness and education because what we may be doing right now could change dramatically with the next wave of what cybersecurity may be.
Thank you. Yeah, I completely agree with you. You know, we just, you know, government has a rich history of being overly responsive and even slow to respond. It wouldn't shock me if Fred Flintstone still has an office somewhere in here. But I think you're right. We need to stay ahead of it and I just think January 27 might be better. I'm glad to see you agree with that and thank you for that.
I do completely, sir.
All right, thank you. Other questions from members of the committee? There are none. It's always a pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir.
Next, we have First Selectman Rudy Marconi, who I believe is virtual. Selectman Marconi.
Good morning, everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to extend my thanks to leadership, the, let's see, Chairman Glaston, Chairman Boyd, Vice Chairs, Ranking Members and all members of the Public Safety Committee. This is a very critical committee for the future of our state and our municipalities. Excuse me, listening to Senator Wong for many years and listening to his very passionate plea to you and testimony, I can only double what he has said and the importance of it. There are countries around the world that have formed entire branches of service to fight the issue of cybersecurity and we're far behind. So anything that can be done to help municipalities, Richfield is ready, willing and able to pitch in. But today I'm here to testify on behalf of Senate Bill 1318. I'm representing CCM, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. You all received a copy of the testimony that was sent to you. I'm not going to be repetitious and read that to you. I do want to say that, starting in 2016, with CCM and others, began working with the fire representatives of the state, the state of Connecticut and municipalities to come up with a solution that definitely helps people in the fire service. As you all know, or I'll inform you that 30%, firefighters have a 30% higher rate of cancer than anyone else. And there are reasons for that, as you can well imagine. And that's the reason why I'm here today. Originally, back in 2016, we were looking at putting this into workers' comp, that a firefighter could claim workers' comp, which was great. However, the impact on the municipality, the financial consequences on the municipality within the workers' comp system meant that we would all have our rates adjusted to compensate for this and be an exponential increase in our workers' comp rates, thereby once again impacting personal property, real estate property taxes locally to cover the cost of that. In 2016, we began the work. Representative Michelle Cook out of the Torrington area was very instrumental in this in coming up with a solution with volunteers, fire marshals, union, everyone across the state in the fire service. To come up with a solution, the solution was the presumption of cancer and the establishment of a separate fund. That fund was initially provided for by the state with about $5 million. And every municipality today contributes $10 per firefighter, which is a very meager amount. I am not here to advocate that you raise how much we contribute, but we have 22 firefighters who qualify for the presumption of cancer fund. We submitted, as required by state statute, $10 per firefighter, $220. That's embarrassing. We should, at 200, there should be a scaled value for each municipality because not only are these men and women subjected to the chemicals from A to Z, but we're also experiencing in some of the more rural areas of our state, a lack of volunteerism that is having serious consequences in those communities being able to provide ambulance service or even fire service. And we need to think of ways to incentivize that and the least of which is protecting the health, safety and welfare of the individuals who actually participate in this. The current fund has about $7 million. It sounds like a lot of money. It is. However, it's a small amount with just one claim and we all know that. Whether through personal experience, hearsay, we know that anyone who files a cancer claim can have a life of invoices, bills, et cetera. And if you have a firefighter that, God forbid, contracts cancer and dies at 42, 45, 46 years old, leaves a family of young children, a house, the mortgage, the car payments, college education, let alone the cost of the healthcare, can put them into bankruptcy. We cannot allow this to happen to the fine men and women who provide this vital service to our municipalities. So all in there, CCM is in full support of Senate Bill 1318. It's extremely important to all the fire servicemen and women in the state of Connecticut. And as I said, volunteers, fire marshals, all of them, EMTs. We need to provide them a safe haven in the event that they do contract cancer as a result of their service to our municipalities. Thank you.
Thank you. And we appreciate, you know, CCM bringing this, bringing this proposal forward to have this discussion because I think everybody agrees we have to have a dedicated funding source that's not just going to dry up and we can't turn to our firefighters and say, well, we don't have any. So I appreciate your adding to the conversation. Questions from members of the committee? Representative Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. I think we, as the chairman said, we all agree, or at least I think we do, that when individuals in this state put their life on the line and do a job that most people won't do, we as a state have an obligation to protect them and address the medical problems that come as a result. My question to you though, is how did we land on telephone bills to fund this, if you know?
Yeah, years ago, we tried, and I forget which rep or senator made the suggestion because we were going back and forth, how do we fund this program? And the idea came in the LOB cafeteria that perhaps we just add a small amount of money onto the E911 bills, invoices that go out to everyone. And unfortunately, that was determined to be illegal because it had nothing to do with the E911 service. So the FCC told us, we cannot do it. This idea comes on the heels of that. So if we can't do an E911, why can't we do a general telephone bill? It's a small amount. I know a lot of people go and say, yeah, it's just another form of tax. Absolutely right. It is another form of tax. But when you think about it, five cents a month, 60 cents a year, that will provide the funding to cover the cost of all of the cancer cases, and I think there are about 15 at this point that have been submitted, that will cover the cost and create sustainability. It is such a small price to pay for such a large reward and insurance to be provided to the men and women of the fire service. So how did it originate? Originally on the E911 bill, CCM went to work. We've gotten okay so far for this. We would like to proceed and provide the funding necessary to keep this program going, to create a sustainable model for the future.
Thank you. Well, I mean, then you're right. I mean, I would agree with you. It is, it is another form of tax. And I agree, it's a, it's a very small amount to pay for, in exchange for what firefighters do for us. I just, you know, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole of some other issues going on in this building. But when we start putting taxes into utility bills, minimal as they may be, it can become problematic. It can grow over time into significant bills for utilities. And I think, you know, it's just my opinion, and you're an elected official as well, that if we as a legislative body are going to make a determination that we are going to fund something, which we should do in this case, I just feel like it should come from the budget, the same way we do everything else. And whether those are town budgets making contributions, which I'm sure he would oppose, or the state budgets, it just seems like a better route. But I'll give you the opportunity to tell me why I should change my mind, please.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I don't often get that. To change your mind, the vulnerability with a budgetary line item, to me, creates much more of a question mark for the future than a small, minimal amount at the bottom of a phone bill. We all know we get add-ons, no matter where we go, whether it's for health services, phone service, whatever it is. This is so miniscule, I don't think anyone's going to blink an eye nor know it. Your concern relative to it could be a runaway in the future. The five cents for every penny of contribution, I think we generate $600,000 of revenue for this fund. So if you're looking at five cents, my math is right, it's roughly $3 million a year. $3 million could be one claim, very easily, given our runaway healthcare costs. But in order to protect this from being a runaway, maybe we establish, maybe this committee or someone else in the state has to approve any increases and justify it. It has to be cost justified. Cost-benefit analysis, that's something that not too many people do, but I think this is certainly well worth it. If we see that the number of cases for firefighters is escalating to the point where we cannot cover it, I would, I would suggest that we revisit this, either increase it or come up with another funding source because we cannot ignore it.
Well, thank you. And I thank you for, for being here and answering those questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the committee? Representative Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for being with us, Mr. First Selectman. So did I hear you right that it's estimated that this would add about $3 million a year to the cancer fund?
That was my off-the-top-of-the-head estimate. If one cent surcharge could generate around $600,000 annually, and we go to five cents, five times the 600 is $3 million, right?
That would do it.
That's the old math. That's not new math. I'll, I'll be honest.
Yeah, if it was new math, I think you'd have a different number. But, and this would be implemented right away and, you know, I don't know that we've dipped much into the $7 million yet, but I do agree with you that once we do, cancer claims are astronomically high. And I suspect that either this fee or the general contribution fee is going to have to be adjusted at some point in the long run. But, you know, I guess where does it stop and why shouldn't this be covered as part of a normal workers' compensation claim since the injury is arising, just like any other physical injury would arise?
Yeah, where it ends, it's tough to say. A lot of people ask me that about local property taxes. When's it going to end? I don't think it ever will end. You know, all we can do, our best to do as elected officials is control the amount of increases. Relative to the second part of your question, can you just give me that again, please?
What I was basically saying is, I mean, this is, this is a job-related injury.
Workers' comp, right.
Just like a back injury, just like any other physical injury that someone in the fire service is at a heightened risk of getting because of the dangerousness of the job. You know, I mean, it seems to me, and I've always felt this way, that it should be covered as part of a normal workers' compensation claim and then not be relied upon, you know, a nickel here, a nickel there. And, you know, all of a sudden, you're talking about real money.
Well, it is real money. And as I mentioned earlier with workers' comp, when Karma, can I get in her local risk management? They provide a lot of our liability workers' comp for most municipalities. Did estimates, if a firefighter tests positive for testicular cancer, very common issue in the fire service. Workers' comp, as you well know, establishes a claim incurred but not recorded. So the initial cost of that case is covered, but they also will establish a long-term liability, which escalates our rates incredibly. And the reason for staying away for comp, workers' comp, is just that. Every municipality, in our town, we have 38 paid firefighters. We have about 50 volunteers. For every one of them, we would, once a claim is established, begin paying the future liability of that claim. And that money would be escrow to cover such possible cost increases. That's not a good formula, personally. Most municipalities would agree. I know Karma does. The impact statewide would be millions. Not that the number of cases would require it, but the assessment to each municipality would be in the millions. And we always talk about how And we always talk about, how do we work together, state and municipalities, to control the local property tax? Here's a perfect example. We have the opportunity to do that. And municipalities are willing to participate, like I said, as well, that ten dollars per firefighter is absurd. We can increase that, our participation. And it's important that we create a sustainable future for this fund. Workers' comp won't do that. It will not. And the average property owner is going to begin paying dearly for that, if it were to go into workers' comp. That was the main driving force for CCM and myself and many others back in 2016 to go to work on this.
Right. Well, I appreciate that. I mean, I guess we can agree to disagree on where it should be, but again, thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Appreciate.
All right. Seeing nothing else, I guess the big takeaway is here, the best ideas come out in the LOB lunchroom, so that's. But, yeah, thank you, First Selectman.
Thank you.
Next is First Selectman Carl Fortuna from the town of Old Seabrook, who is remote.
Thank you. Good afternoon, or good morning, actually. Chairman Gaston, Chairman Boyd, vice chairs, ranking members, and all members of the Public Safety and Security Committee. My name is Carl Fortuna, First Selectman in the town of Old Seabrook. And I am also testifying in support of Senate Bill thirteen eighteen, which would establish a five-cent monthly surcharge on phone lines in the state to effectively fund the firefighter cancer relief account. I'm glad your, your, all your hard questions went to Rudy. I'll try not to, I will try not to repeat much here because he definitely hit the highlights. But one of the things I'm concerned about here, and in, almost in response to one of the questions from one of the committee members, Old Seabrook has nearly, because we're all volunteer, we're almost in a worse position than towns that might have a paid firefighters, because we have ninety volunteers. We're very grateful for those ninety volunteers. We're a very successful volunteer fire department. But that would have, because we're so successful, and they are covered under our workers' comp benefits when they get injured, it would almost have a perverse effect by putting it, this into workers' comp on the town of Old Seabrook than it would to maybe some of the paid towns. You know, we've been, as Rudy stated so eloquently and succinctly, we've been really dealing with this for ten years, this, this issue. It is time to put it to bed. And putting it to bed, I firmly believe, respectfully believe that it should not be in the workers' comp system. I'm chairman of the board at Kerma. We, we looked at our Deloitte to do some research on the workers' comp aspect of this bill, and the numbers were just, I, I don't have them handy. They, they began looking at it, and the numbers were so huge in terms of the potential long-term effect in the workers' comp system, and therefore, the rates that towns would pay, that we kind of called it off at that point. And CCM, we regrouped on this and came forward with this proposal, which would be legal, keep it off the E nine one one. And again, as Rudy said, put a five-cent surcharge, or three cent, maybe it gets scaled up, maybe we see how the claims come in. But I firmly believe this is not something that the towns, with, with our regressive property tax system that we currently have in the state, we all know it's a regressive tax for some of those folks in our towns. It, it's a tough place to put it, and, and by putting it in workers' comp, you're putting it on the property tax. So this seems to me to be a somewhat elegant solution to what could be a very large problem in the state. And even though we have a minimal number of claims right now, I suspect those claims will keep coming, because if you look at the list of cancers that would be eligible under this, it, I think there's ten or fifteen cancers. And a lot of them are very well-known to all of us. And because there might be a higher incidence in firefighters, those claims can be made. And one other thing about workers' comp, I think the bill as proposed previously in a, in a different session last year or the year before, was that there be a presumption in the firefighter's favor that it was causally related to the work, and that's the starting point at workers' comp. Right now, firefighters can go to workers' comp and make a workers' comp claim for cancer as a firefighter, but they have to prove that it was causally related. We don't want to be in that position with our firefighters. We, we'd hate to have that adverse relationship, but the presumption puts us back in the heart and hypertension days, and we all know what that did to towns and cities in the state of Connecticut. Thankfully, heart and hypertension ended on July one, nineteen ninety-six, and we are all still paying as a result of that bill. And having a presumption in fa- in favor of firefighter cancer in the workers' comp system would do something very similar to towns and cities, in my opinion. So, you know, I don't want to repeat anything else that Rudy may have said. I, I know all of you are very familiar with this proposal. And so I'll leave it there. I just responded to some of the comments as opposed to reading my testimony.
Yep. No, I appreciate, appreciate your testimony in that regard, and adding to it. You're right, I think Rudy had all the really hard questions, so.
Yeah.
It's good to go second on the First Selectman circuit here. So any questions from members of the committee? Mr. Quinn is sitting on his hands, so you're off, you're off the hook, sir.
All right, thank you.
Sir, appreciate your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, next we have Peter Brown with the UPFFA. Welcome. It's good to see you in person this week.
Good morning. Morning. Chairman Gaston, Chairman Boyd, ranking members, and all the distinguished members of the Public Safety and Security Committee. Good to see you in person today. My name is Peter Brown. I'm the President Uniform Professional Firefighters Association. We represent nearly four thousand career firefighters across the state of Connecticut. And I'm here testifying in support of Senate Bill thirteen eighteen, an act assessing a certain fee to be deposited into the firefighter cancer relief fund. I provided written testimony online. I just wanted to provide some additional context in person here. So we're facing an epidemic in the fire service. Occupational cancer over the last ten years has become the number one killer of firefighters, and it currently accounts for nearly seventy-five percent of all line-of-duty deaths. And I think when you look at cancer rates for specific cancers in the fire service, those rates above the general population are three, four, sometimes five times that of what the average person is getting diagnosed with that type of cancer. We are far from immune from it here in Connecticut. Over the last five years, we've lost five firefighters to cancer, including most recently last week, we lost a Waterbury firefighter, who's been battling cancer for over a decade. So two years ago, this General Assembly took a very proactive approach and passed a comprehensive set of cancer protections for firefighters. They provide wage replacement, they provide medical cost reimbursement, they provide job protection for our career folks, and also they provide access to disability and survivor benefits for those that can no longer work, or for those that lose their life to, to cancer. But unfortunately, a law is only as effective as it's followed. Since the law went to effect in October twenty twenty-three, we have thirty-five firefighters that have filed claim with active cancer. And less than five of those claims since October of twenty twenty-three have been accepted. That means we have thirty firefighters right now with active cancer that are not receiving the benefits that they're entitled to and deserve under the law. Over the last two years, I've, I've attended some of those hearings, I've met with the firefighters that are going through these hearings, and those claims are being denied for a variety of reasons, but one of the main things that keeps coming up is the fund is not solvent enough, and without a dedicated funding stream, they're just, there's a fear that the bank, the fund's going to go bankrupt, and we're not going to be able to process these claims. So a lot of these claims are not moving forward until we are able to determine a dedicated funding source. And since that original law went to effect, we have worked and tried to come up with creative ideas to make sure that this fund stays funded. We've looked at one-time payments through the budget process. We've talked about bonding this. We don't want to, we don't want to put an unfunded mandate on municipalities. We don't want to put more pressure on any of our Connecticut families, but we see this bill as a minimal nominal charge on our cell phone bills. My family of four with four cell phones be two dollars and forty cents a year. I think even under these difficult times, most families can afford to pay this, this, this small fee to make sure that our firefighter is protected. And we look forward to help support this bill and, and work with the legislature, maybe hopefully get it passed. Thank you for your time, and I'd, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No, thank you. It, it's not often that the, the union and CCM are back-to-back in agreement on something.
Never, never in my career.
Yeah, right. So, so it feels a little odd here in the room, but appreciate, appreciate your testimony, and your written testimony as well. Questions from members of the committee? Mr. Howard?
Good, good morning, still morning, sir. Thank you for your testimony. I, I totally, I completely agree with you. I mean, I have a family of four, too. I mean, to hand three dollars, to hand three dollars a day to firefighters would be fine with me, but do you know, and if you don't, it's fine, probably should, should ask First Selectman this as well. If you give two dollars and forty cents a year to this fund, how much of it is going to make it to the fund? Do you know?
How much of the two dollars and forty?
In other words, in other words, I imagine, and I don't know this exactly, and if you don't either, I can find out. I just didn't know if in the planning of this, it was discussed, if there's a cost to whether the phone companies are going to incur a cost for handling this, or what, or if the money's going to go directly there, do you know?
I, I, I don't know, I'm sorry.
All right, no, that's fine. I, I don't either, so don't, don't apologize. So, but we can find that out. This is an interesting question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cops and firefighters agreeing. Look at this, another trying. Other questions from members of the committee? Mr. Quinn, prepare yourself, Mr. Brown.
Friendly fire, I assure you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Peter, of the five claims out of the thirty-five that have been accepted, do you have any idea how much has been expended in medical treatment or lost time benefits?
I, I don't have an, an exact dollar amount representative, but I, I know the, the amount is very minimal. The way that this, the way that these benefits were structured, it was set up to hopefully lead to long-term success and not bankrupt the fund on catastrophic claims. Medical costs, medical treatment goes through group health insurance, and the firefighter is only receiving out-of-pocket medical co- medical reimbursements, so copays, prescription copays, doctor visits, things like that. That's the only thing being reimbursed. And wage replacement is based on the maximum workers' comp rate, which is, you probably know better than I do, thirteen or fourteen hundred dollars a week, I believe, so we don't anticipate that most of these claims are going to reach a catastrophic level, based on some of the guardrails that were put in place to keep, keep costs down.
You know, I, I also agree with you too, though, that we could get to a point where if there are enough of these things, that it's going to deplete this fund rather rapidly. Of the ones that haven't been accept, I mean, we've established a system where certain cancers, there's a presumption that it's related to the job. But in thirty of the thirty-five cases, they've come up with a reason that it's not a presumption, and they're, basically their basis is that it's going to cost too much?
Basically. So the way that we're structured, although we're outside of workers' comp, we follow the same process as workers' comp. So our members file a thirty C when they have a claim, and they're receiving forty-three denial forms from their municipalities. Most of them are using boilerplate denial language, saying that, that the illness did not arise in the course of your duties, which is not required on, not required under the law, but that's the language being used. The conversations that we're having out of the, out of the hearing process is where we're hearing about funding levels and not wanting to take on the liability with a fund that's going to go insolvent, and, and municipalities not wanting to be on the hook for these, for these large claims down the road, and they don't want to be in a position where they're shutting off benefits to a firefighter that has cancer. And, and we agree with them on that level, so that's, that's, that's some of the things we're hearing. There's also some technical changes that we're looking to make in the bill this year in a separate bill, but funding seems to be one of the main things that we keep coming back to.
Of the thirty that haven't been accepted, have any of them gone to a pre-formal or a formal hearing?
Yes, a, a, a number of them have, yes.
And have there been favorable results for the claimants or not?
So, one of the technical changes that we're looking to make is, there's been a claim made that workers' compensation judges do not have jurisdiction to rule on these cases. They've agreed a hundred percent with us at the table that, based on their reading of the law, they believe these firefighters meet the criteria and they should be covered, but they say they lack the jurisdiction to actually make that, make that claim and, and, and force a municipality to actually pay these claims. So that's hopefully one of the things we're going to be able to correct this year. Honestly, we envisioned, when, when this program came into effect, we envisioned that the majority of these claims would not need to go to a hearing process. If a firefighter met the five criteria that are listed in the law, which are all pretty easy to determine, you're eligible for the benefits, and you'd start receiving those benefits as soon as possible. And, and to go to your, a previous question you asked a, a previous speaker, one of the reasons, and, and we agreed with you, in, in the beginning, we were a hundred percent in favor of this going through the workers' comp process, because we thought, we're all familiar with it, our firefighters deal with workers' compensation, unfortunately, on a regular basis, but we, we, we're aware of the system, it's very easy to navigate for us. But when this program came about, we wanted to make sure that our firefighters received access to these benefits as quick as possible, because unlike some on-the-job injuries, they don't have the luxury to wait for a process to play out through a hearing process and going through an informal, a formal, we, we needed access to these benefits immediately, some of these, some of these people with serious cancer. And we thought this program would allow them access to that as quick as possible. It's not been the case that we've seen in a year and a half.
No, and I would gather that in probably most, if not all, of the denied cases, that they probably have had periods of time where they've missed work while they're getting treatment, and they're either burning sick time, vacation time. You know, I know in some instances, you know, other firefighters will contribute time towards them. But you're right. I mean, if you're expecting the paycheck this week, I mean, you can't wait a year, year and a half for it to come through. In, in a system that we've created, where it, it's a presumption. I, I mean, it just does not make any sense to me, but I certainly understand the financial concerns behind it.
Yeah, thank you. Agree with you a hundred percent, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of, Representative Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You may or may not know the answer to this. So when the firefighter applies to their workman's comp process, do you know how many or what percentage goes through, like Kerma, for example, very specifically? Do you know who the carriers are in that? And, and the reason I ask that question is I know a lot of our municipalities have Kerma for their workman's comp, and Kerma, quite frankly, has been a nightmare in the past to deal with for police, firefighters. They're, in my humble opinion, we looked other places because we were having so many problems, especially with our law enforcement claims. So my question is, is it a problem with the workman's comp process itself, or is it specific to certain carriers for workman's comp?
Thank you, Representative. Yeah, so the, most municipalities, as you know, they're split between, and our groups are usually split between two major carriers for workers' compensation. I'd say both, we've run into similar situations, as you mentioned. Again, when, when this program came into effect, we didn't believe that, although it was mirroring the workers' comp system, we didn't believe most of these claims would need to go through the workers' comp system. We thought it was pretty, pretty simple to look and say, yes, a firefighter has five years of service, they pass a pre-employment physical, they're diagnosed with this specific cancer, they've signed an affidavit that they do not smoke in the last fifteen years. If you meet those criteria, you're supposed to receive the benefits. I think what we're seeing is most municipalities are receiving the claim, it's coming on a thirty C form, which is used for workers' compensation. Whenever they see anything related to workers' compensation, they immediately kick it over to their third-party workers' comp insurance provider, which many cases is Kerma. And, and that's when it's going through the process as we described. They're receiving a denial letter, they're being told it didn't, it didn't arise in the course of their duties, and they're getting dragged through the informal hearing process and, and, and not receiving access to those benefits.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer. And maybe as we move forward in this process, process, that's something we definitely need to look at is that whole process applying, it's got to be streamlined, it's got to be quicker. So thank you, thank you for your response.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions from members of the committee? All right, Mr. Brown, as always, we appreciate your, your testimony.
Thank you.
Next is Jeff Tomczyk, also from the UPFFA in Danbury. Floor is yours.
Thank you. And good afternoon, distinguished chairs, honorable ranking members and the Public Safety and Security Committee as a whole. My name is Jeff Tomczyk. I am the Director of Legislative and Political Affairs for the Uniformed Professional Firefighters of Connecticut. I have provided my written testimony and we certainly had a lot of speakers today in support of this. But I, I do, I will go off a little bit script of, of what I had provided from my written and just let you know that our organization as a whole is strongly in favor of SB 1318. And I want to give you a little bit of background on, on how we ended up here. I don't want this to see it, seem as a fragmented ask or an unneeded or undue process or workaround. What happened is, you know, as, as was already indicated, in 2016, we began this, this discussion at the state legislature on cancer. And understandably so, and, and with great gratitude, the legislature really understood the dilemma that firefighters are facing in regards to our, our plight with, with cancer and exposures. So what transpired in 2016 was a little bit short of where we wanted to end up. And I think that in 2022, we, we began to revisit that and discuss it further and really recognize that there was a standard across the nation up to a certain point of, of what could be provided for this occupational illness. So we worked and truly as a collaboration with many agencies and interested vested parties to come up with a significant conclusion, which, which is what was presented in 7-313P, our current benefit that's, that's outlined. The, the funding mechanism, which we knew was always needed and we had asked at that time, we had, we had began with the line item that we were getting in the budget, which we're extremely grateful for, but certainly recognized the shortcoming that did, that that applied to. Specifically, under the 7-313J statute, which was strictly wage replacement, which may have been substantial or fitting for that, for that need. But the expansion under the new statute, certainly that fell short. And we worked with the legislature, both chambers at that point, and were able to discuss a, a required amount. Unfortunately, I think we're about 70% to 80% lower than that, which caused us a little bit of concern. But we recognized how far we were along with the process, again collaboratively with all the, with all the vested parties. And we recognized that getting the language into place was the, the vital part of creating passage and that the funding mechanism or a concept, an idea of a way to get this funded would be able to move forward. That was a quick time, but I'll.
Keep going.
I'll end my, my, or summarize this by saying, look, it is, it is a mantra of the fire service industry-wide that we, we will never present a problem without presenting solutions. And we believe strongly that, that this method is very viable, low impact and can clearly be seen as an investment to creating a stronger and healthier fire service to provide more effective services. I will certainly answer any questions that you have, but I do want to thank this committee for all the work that they do and the support in this measure.
Thank you. And I, and I appreciate, not every group comes to us with solutions to the problems. Most just bring problems to ours. So we, we do appreciate that piece in keeping this conversation going and trying to find a, a conclusion that works for, that works for everybody with that. So questions from members of the committee?
Mr. Chair.
Representative, go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Tomczyk. First, I want to say thank you for your long-term commitment and service of supporting and actively working for firefighters across the state. With your comments on, you know, coming to the table with solutions, my opinion, I think that you have repeatedly come to the table with multiple solutions and trying to figure out how to best make sure that, you know, our, our public safety members, particularly in the fire service, are supported. And it therefore then helps to incentivize that we are recruiting more firefighters to come into the service because they need to know that they're taken care of. My question is, the five cents, is that, is that the pathway forward or do you think that it needs to be increased?
That's a very, very excellent question. I appreciate you asking. The, the beginning part of your statement, I do want to respond to. We have, in the time period of the, us developing the language in 2022 and beginning the conversation on a funding mechanism, have put a lot of, a tremendous amount of thought and, and sought expert guidance on trying to identify the most reasonable, sustainable and effective way to fund, fund this, this account. It was clear to us that, you know, as some of the questions were asked or points were raised in regards to the workers' compensation system, that there was a very strong viewpoint that, that this would bankrupt municipalities based on, on the insurance, increased insurance costs through workers' compensation process. We felt strongly through our, our guidance, our, our legal research and our research into the, the health industry and insurance industries that, that that wouldn't be the case. But in essence, describing this as possibly a carve-out from the workers' compensation system and creating a fund, that, that the development process, gaining claims experience, getting a better understanding of the costs, realizing that a good portion of, of the cost would be borne on or continued to be carried by the, the personal insurance that, that a member carries. And then the out-of-pockets would be reimbursed through the fund was an effective way for them to develop some sort of rider package that would, that would cover at a reduced cost. And therefore, instead of seeing individual claims with unexpected or unknown costs, it would just be a routinely annual, like rider charge or, or basic charge. So through all of those methods and, and, and ideas and concepts that we came up with to, to develop a, a funding mechanism, we recognized that we were short of two areas. One was the claim experience to really understand it truly. We were able to gather a significant amount of interest, information nationwide. I think we got 30 other states that have similar or some sort of cancer benefit for firefighters and how they bear those costs. A majority of it was on the soul of, of the legislative bodies. Some of those were just through specific contributions. I don't believe that this, this phone charge was one of them, but we looked at, at it from the perspective of how to keep the most, the least amount of impact to the, the resident. In, in essence, as it was raised also, a tax, we could call it, or however you want to see it. If it was a raise in insurance costs through the municipality, an out-of-pocket form, from, from the fund itself, continual going to the legislative body and asking for a lump sum deposits, all of that is, end up going to come back to, to the, to the resident in the form of, of tax, property taxes, so state, state income taxes, so on and so forth. So we, we wanted to be able to separate that concept and keep the cost burden at the absolute minimum. And through this process of what we, what we, what we develop, or what we, our thought process, our concept was that identifying it straight through a direct resident fee through, through this telecommunication aspect, not only are we keeping it extremely low, but what the original statute, 7-313P allows for is a specific committee that is developed and currently in operation, I believe, that evaluates monitors and makes recommendations on the fund. You know, I, I believe a speaker said previously about that, that it would be continual long-term and potentially need for increase. I, I don't believe that's the case. The numbers that we were running and the direction that we would like to see the fund go in is going to be recommend, is going to be based on the recommendations from that committee. That committee is tasked with taking, getting to the point where the fund is at a certain level and being able to reinvest that fund to, to maintain it, maintain its sustainability going forward, which would give us the flexibility to decrease or eliminate the, the charge presented. And although we are firefighters by nature, finance is not really our, our, our strong point, but we understood that the number that was come up, the five cent charge, is probably the best starting point to get to a buffer perspective where that committee can in, in fact, put those investments into place and build on the sustainability. With the sustainability in place, also with fluctuations in population, we do have the opportunity to increase or decrease and again eliminate that, that as seen going forward. The, the key, the key point about this is that when we, we don't anticipate, there are differing perspectives on how this fund is going to go. We would really, we believe strongly that moving in the position of getting an, a rider plan where just a specific charge is taken out of the account to cover the benefits through an insurance carrier would lead to a much more transparent and very clear prospectus on what the fund will do in fluctuation of its amounts. And rather than on a case-by-case basis of individual reimbursements. So that would be a goal and very much able to control getting to the point where we can decrease or eliminate that charge.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from members of the committee? Representative Heffron?
Morning, Mr. Tomczyk. Thank you for your testimony today. I just want to echo my colleagues in saying that thank you for bringing solutions instead of just problems. And I want to commend you on thinking outside the box and coming up with a creative solution to this. I think that this should probably be an easy lift for us and I thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. If I may just add a comment, I, I did, between your comments and what was asked before, I do want to give appreciation to, in 2016, it was Representative Rattiglione that, that had talked about that 911 charge. And really the, the challenge in that and, and the discussion on, on, on why that process wouldn't have worked due to also the, the FCC implications there, but there was also a question of jeopardizing the state's funding levels for the 911 reimbursements as they improve their system. So we certainly didn't think that was viable or, or an opportunity to jeopardize, you know, improving that system.
Thank you. And I apologize, Representative Heffron, he's still new here, so he doesn't know what a heavy lift is or isn't in the building. So sometimes you're surprised, so thank you. All right, hearing nothing else, thank you, sir. Next is Chief Priest with the Joint Council and Fire Service Organizations. Chief, fresh off a trip to Washington DC, so.
Oh, good afternoon, Senator Gaston, Representative Boyd, Senator Chicarella, and the members of the Public Safety and Security Committee. I think you know who I am at this point in time after all of this, but I'm Greg Priest. I'm here representing the Joint Council. I am the Vice Chair at the moment, most of the Vice President of the Connecticut Career Chiefs Association. I'm very pleased at the commentary and the back-and-forth dialogue that's gone on today. So my remarks will be even more brief. I'll just try and introduce some of my own thoughts on the matter and the joint councils and be glad to answer any other questions. So I should be up here shortly or done very quickly. So first, it's to Representative Howard, which has to do with the Joint Council is not taking a position on where the funding comes from. We just appreciate the support and we're interested in sustainable funding to make sure that firefighters are protected and supported should they unfortunately contract cancer. I would also dovetail in on additional remarks that were there, which is, is when is the last time that the legislature has seen labor management, unions, police officers, everybody agreeing on a particular topic? This is one of them. I'm very, very pleased to see this type of agreement going forward and we have been in communication with our colleagues from CCM who were some very instrumental partners early on. And while there may still be some, you know, further conversations about the sort of how claims are processed, this is definitely a very good step and it is something that can be done this year. We're looking forward to that. The only things that I, that my colleagues and I would recommend is, is that you look at the language of the bill to ensure that you are handling the details of how the funds are collected and administratively processed. It's also to Rep. Howard's point, which is making sure that those funds directly go to firefighters. We would respectfully request, the, the topic of the $10 of municipalities has come up, we would suggest that you look at removing as much of the administrative burden on individual fire departments as possible. Continue to look at this as a statewide issue and make sure that P, that the state is resourced in such a way to process this type of fee. And then lastly, while we have discussed that the claims are incredibly expensive, we would also recommend that you just look at the language to make sure that if there are any excess funds at any point in time, you are looking at ways that we can reduce cancer in firefighters because that is our ultimate goal here, is to prevent firefighters from getting cancer or to identify it early so that somebody can be treated with that. So an example of that might be non-funding, non-PFAS containing fire gear, preventative cancer screenings or other similar initiatives. And with that, I would be glad to answer any questions you may have of me and my role with the Joint Council or the Connecticut Career Chiefs.
Thank you, Chief Priest. You indicated that you want to ensure that the state was well-resourced to sort of process these kind of claims in the event that they happen. And I know that there are some people who believe that, you know, local governments are able to handle those things just as efficiently and effectively. Could you differentiate the most, I guess, the advantage of the state being able to handle these things opposed to the municipality itself or local fire departments?
Thank you for that question, sir. I think what my comments are is I just want you to make sure that the bill addresses who specifically is going to do what. My remarks are tailored towards the administrative aspects when we went to collecting the $10 per firefighter. There were some discussions about, you know, who is a firefighter and there were a lot of things that we feel could be cleaned up, especially as you're getting ready to take this moment to step forward. I do believe local municipalities do have some capacity to do it, but that's a varying capacity based on the size of your fire department and the administrative structures that are within. And then lastly, I would say cancer affects all state firefighters regardless of whether you are volunteer or career, what combination. And the state should be looking at this holistically to protect firefighters.
Okay, last question. Have we sort of streamlined and pared down who would be considered a firefighter? Is it anybody that work in the fire department? Is it a sworn fire officer? What is that right now?
I believe we have that statutorily defined right at the moment. I can look to some of my colleagues who were there. We're, we're pretty clear on who constitutes a firefighter at this point in time and it encompasses our fire marshals as well.
Thank you. John, is there anything you, you were said?
From the state firefighters' point of view, we are also in agreement and collaboration of this. In the other part of it that I don't think was brought up too clearly is everybody with a phone has access to fire service. So to tie it into the phone charge doesn't seem to be a far stretch. So if you're going to call someone for help, you need to use a phone.
Very good, thank you. Questions from members of the committee? Go ahead, Representative Howard.
I have a question. So if I'm on fire and I don't have a phone and somebody else calls, you going to come help me?
We're still going to come out, yes.
Okay, thanks. I couldn't let it go.
Just point out, Chief Priest is both a firefighter and a police officer, so you know. Yeah, all right. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you. Next is Roger Nelson from the Fire Marshals Association. After one more appearance, Roger, you get a free coffee.
Supposed to get that last time.
Floor is yours, sir.
Representative Boyd, Senator Gaston, Senator Chicarella, Representative Howard, and distinguished members of the Public Safety Committee. My name is Roger Nelson. I'm currently the Vice President of the Connecticut Fire Marshals Association and co-legislative rep. We are here in support of House Bill 6965, an act concerning the state fire marshal, deputy state fire marshal, membership of the fire marshal, training council, et cetera. Section one of this proposal offers some protection to the position of the state fire marshal. The proposed language offers written process for the removal of the state fire marshal by offering an opportunity to have a hearing before the commissioner to defend his or her position. The position of the state fire marshal is important to local fire marshals as it provides a conduit for the local fire marshals on code issues, issues to the Codes and Standards Committee and the commissioner. The goal is to provide the state fire marshal some insulation from political pressures and allow the free expression of local fire marshal's positions to the commissioner. This would mirror the protections that are given to the local fire marshals in the field right now. Section two of this bill is proposed is important to the CFMA for adjusting the fire, fire training council membership committee so we can have a quorum. Over the last probably five odd years, because of the makeup of the committee of 12 members and various educational positions, there hasn't been able to have a quorum, to have a meeting. We've worked with the committee to adjust this a little down to nine members. The current, the council has four major functions. It approves the certification training programs for fire marshal decertification, approves service, in-service training, approves programs for continuing education. One concern of the CFMA is on line 39 where LCO changed the fire marshal representation from the Connecticut Fire Marshals Association to an association representing the interests of the fire marshals of the state. Not quite sure what that means. CFMA has been since 1948, the only association representing fire marshals and fire inspectors in the state of Connecticut. Lastly, in section three, the legislation creates a fire and catastrophic restoration business license. CFMA is in favor of this concept, but this is not for the state fire marshal to do, but the Department of Consumer Protection is best suited to regulate these licenses. DCP already has these licensed contractors and is the state's best equipped to add and maintain this license, if it actually is a license. Home improvement car, building contractors, home improvement contractors don't need a license. It's a registration. So I'm not quite sure where this is coming from. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Roger. I mean, you heard, you were here for DAS's testimony earlier. I don't know if you want to opine upon anything that they, that they brought up and if there's perhaps a different point of view.
We're just trying to give a little bit of protection to the state fire marshal on this. If there has been a, I believe the statute for the deputy state fire marshal has been there for a while, but yet we have no deputy state fire marshal, nor has there been any attempt or any effort even to put one in place.
I, Rep. Boyd, Terry Dunn, President, Connecticut Fire Marshal Association. Just so I can add, after hearing DAS's testimony this morning, I'd like to add, you know, last legislative session, we had a pretty controversial topic come up and it was very disappointing to see the state fire marshal not be able to come here and testify, which is a whole different topic. But we believe it's imperative that the state fire marshal have some protection and the ability to be, to come here and speak and testify on whatever topic, even if being controversial, without the fear of losing his or her job. This protection that, you know, we were proposing would model the same that us local fire marshals have to deal with political pressures. And regarding the deputy fire marshal's position, you know, we've been hearing it for a couple of years now and have yet to see it be filled. So.
Thank you. Questions from members of the committee. Representative McGordy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you both for coming in today. And you guys were here for when I made my comments to the commissioner. So I want to, you're going to earn your coffee, okay? Roger, so I, I just want to ask you guys, and for those in the, in the room that don't know, if I go out and I do a fire inspection at a local restaurant and the mayor owns that restaurant, then I write up a violation notice and I give it to the mayor and the mayor's like, you know what, I, I had it with you. You're fired. He can't do that. He or she cannot do that. I'm protected. Are you protected, Roger? When you're doing fire marshal duties?
I don't have the quite political aspects pretty much because I'm a fire district.
You're what?
I'm a fire district. I work for a fire district within a town. So yes, I have had people make that. I'm going to the mayor.
So there is a statute that protects fire marshals from being released if their mayor or fire commission don't like them. They get their say. And President Dunn, are you protected if you go out and do your fire marshal duties?
I am via statute. You cannot be removed without just cause.
Okay. But the state fire marshal goes out and does fire marshal duties and his boss isn't happy, can let him go just like that?
Correct.
Okay. So if we're protected and the state fire marshal is the authority having jurisdiction, shouldn't they be protected as we are?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So thank you for clearing that up for everybody. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Good to know you're still awake during the hearing. Questions from members of the committee? Okay, hearing done. I, I thank you both for the work that you do in between hearings and stuff, advocating on behalf of the, the marshals. So.
No, thank you, Rep. Boyd. We appreciate everybody's time and effort here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ed Hawthorne with the AFL-CIO.
Morning or afternoon now, I believe.
It's afternoon already, huh?
Floor is yours.
All right. Good afternoon, Senator Gaston, Representative Boyd, other distinguished members of the Public Safety and Security Committee. My name is Ed Hawthorne. I'm proud to serve as the President of Connecticut AFL-CIO, Federation of Hundreds of Unions Representing Approximately 250,000 working men, women, and people here in the state of Connecticut, including thousands of professional firefighters. It's on behalf of our coalition that I am here to testify today in support of SB 1318. So we've heard a lot of testimony regarding this, but I want to focus on the risks that these firefighters take every single day. They put their lives on the line to protect our community. They run into a burning building while everyone else runs away. And part of that is, part of that risk is actually the clothes that they wear. So everyone here is wearing a suit. Our suits are not covered in forever chemicals. They're not covered in PFAS. The firefighters are required to wear this turnout gear to protect them so they can come in and save us. And the PFAS that is soaked in every one of those suits is causing cancer at alarming rates. A lot of the firefighters are sitting behind me and you can pull any of them aside. Each of them know someone who has suffered from cancer or who has died from cancer because we are requiring them to put on a uniform that actually causes cancer. It's proven. The numbers show it. It's very data-driven. And I implore you to look into that. So if we are going to require them to wear uniforms that cause cancer, we should have a continuous funding mechanism in order to treat that cancer when they suffer the logical consequence of the situation we are putting them in. And there was some talk earlier about the funding of this, the funding mechanism. We're talking about a nickel here, a nickel per phone. If you go out and walk into the lobby now or ask anyone in here, if they're willing to pay a nickel surcharge on their cell phone bill to fund firefighter cancer, no one is going to tell you no. I guarantee that. No one will tell you no. I mean, that nickel goes a long way. It ensures the financial assistance, firefighters cover treatment costs, loss of income, other cancer-related expenses. It provides immediate assistance, long-term sustainability, and comprehensive care. I ask this committee to support our firefighters and society's moral duty to support those who put their health at risk for our public safety. So I thank you all for being here today and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hawthorne. Questions from members of the committee? Questions from members of the committee? Hearing done. We appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Scott Molden from the Atlas of Justice.
I wanted to thank the committee chairs and the ranking members. First and foremost, I'm here and I want to really thank Representative David Retiglierano. At the beginning of the year, he proposed bill number HB 6557, which was rolled into HB 6965, which I am in full support. And I'm here to talk about specifically section three, which protects and is the registration of restoration companies and individuals that are not licensed. I am a licensed public adjuster. I am licensed and governed by the Department of Insurance. We have timestamps and we have regulations on when we can solicit business. Restoration companies and individuals that have ganged up on fire scenes and intruded on our fire marshals and our police department presence have, has gotten a little out of hand. The reason why this bill is specifically so important is because our sister state, New York, has enacted similar, similar bills to take these individuals, make them pass a background check, and also register their companies with the state. And also issue an ID that is very present with their face and their company name on it. And in my opinion, that helps drive bad actors out of our state. The reason why we need this act is because the bad characters that have left New York and left the five boroughs, they have worked their way up here. I have shared with Representative Retiglierano explicit video of violence in the street that break out when the fire department is not there. Prior to the, prior to the fire department being there, and also when the police are there, it crowds our streets. It, they are preying on people that are at their worst. They are not qualified. A lot of them are not registered or licensed in Connecticut state or any state, but there's a reason why they come out at the cloak of darkness because no one can see them. If we have the opportunity to pass a law included in 6965, which will license and distribute identification processes for these individuals, restoration companies, mitigation companies, we're not talking about builders like was brought up earlier and individuals that are handymen or doing work in the state. This is not their line of business. This line of business is laser-focused and targeted on people that are at their weakest. Property owners that need help, professionals, but they just don't know who to turn to. So having section three enacted will help our fire department and our police department to basically see who is above board. We need to know who is above and who is active and licensed in our state. Like I said, we have eight in the morning till eight o'clock at night we're allowed to solicit. Once that happens, I go home, I play with my kids, and I have a good night. But what happens after I go home, that's what scares me. And that's why we need 6965 to be enacted and specifically the identification process. This is not something for consumer affairs. This is for the fire marshal. The fire marshal is the one, and I, I take my hat off to them because it is a daunting task to collect all this data from people that are needed to, that want to operate in our state. In essence, if we have the ability to put this forward, it brings extra revenue for our fire department. It'll also continuously, it, it's the first safety for our safety officers. They don't need to, they don't need to dedicate their time and effort on a scene or any type of commercial or residential property scene where they are trying to fend off vendors. They need to concentrate on taking care of knocking down the fire, making sure the property is secured, and letting the insured, commercial or residential, have their fair share in who they need to help them in, in this, in this drastic time because it, it really is when people are at their worst. They have no clue on what to do when their home is on fire. They do call the fire marshal, they come out and they're in the street. And people are trying to shove paperwork on them. Let me represent you. Let me represent you. Let me clean your house. Let me board up your house. That's, there's a proper way to do it. And under the fire marshal's guidance, I think that we'd have the ability to eliminate the bad actors that are coming up north and protect the state of Connecticut from any of these unscrupulous people.
Thank you. I, I was going to ask you to differentiate between, you were here for the marshal's testimony about, they were trying to understand, but I think you kind of went down that path a little bit as to why it's a necessary licensure and you're drawing a strong distinction between the building trades folks, right, and the registration process to having them actually licensured? Or are you asking for them to be registered?
A combination of both. It's, once the, this bill, it seemed to have derived almost word for word off of the Nassau County and Suffolk Counties Act that restoration companies have to go through a fitness capability type of, type of form that they have to fill out. And I believe that that particular form, once you have, once you ask for a background check, most of these people disappear because they can't pass a background check. And that's why they work at the cloak, in the cloak of darkness. And we want to be able to separate that and distinguish the difference between people that are not willing to fill out a background check and not willing to be, have a certification so that the fire marshal can easily identify them on any scene. Bless you. Inevitably, it's, it is a complete necessity and it is for the safety of our fire marshals and our, and our state troopers and our police department that are out on the scene. And most importantly, our, our property owners. Because in most townships, we don't have sidewalks. So when the, when multiple companies gather, they're gathering on people's property. That, to me, is unacceptable. There's a time and a place. And, and I think that the public should be able to have the opportunity to not be bombarded in the middle of the night with unlicensed, unprofessional people because they say they're going to help them. That just doesn't, it's just, it's not good enough.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Questions from members of the committee. Representative Howard?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I've not, I've never experienced this, but I understand what you're saying. So what did happen in my neighborhood last year was a hailstorm came through and within hours of that, a, a bunch of solicitors came through that, you know, did the assessment of, of roofs and siding and then they work with your insurance company. So you're saying that's basically happening the same way when someone's home is on fire, these individuals are showing up to the scene?
It's even more aggressive with a fire scene. Specifically, I had sent a video over to Assistant David Retiglierano's assistant and it, it specifically shows violence in the street, jockeying for a fire claim. And unfortunately, this is, when people hear about insurance claims and money, they just think about dollar signs and the register starts ringing. And unfortunately, that is, that's got to change. But today, we're, we're concentrating on 6965 and getting the individuals that own restoration companies, getting them some sort of identification so that our police and our fire department don't have to be afraid that the people on the scene are threatening to them or to the safety of our, of our constituents.
So if you're licensed in this field already, and I, you, you use the example of eight to eight, are you regulated that you can't approach people after certain times?
Correct.
But there's nothing, so if there's a fire at four o'clock in the afternoon and everybody's licensed, there's nothing preventing 100 licensed professionals from showing up there, right?
No.
So should we, looking at the bill and understanding your concern, because whether background checked or not, you know, a bunch of people on an emergency scene that aren't engaged in emergency operations are a risk and they're, they're in the way. That much I know. So should we amend that, that, you know, they, they can't show up to scenes at all until the, you know, the fire department's cleared and the emergency's over?
I would agree with that, with that statement.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the committee? Mr. McGordy?
Thank you. This will probably be the last time.
You're hitting for the cycle today.
Thanks for coming in. I, and I 100% can relate to what you're talking about. I call them buzzards. They come over and they swarm and they just get in your way. You're in your fire scene. And I have seen them argue with each other to try and get towards the person that just lost everything. And, and there should be something done. There were some good ones. There's some bad actors out. There were some good ones, there's some bad actors out there. And I think we're on the right track with this and it's pretty good. I have at one time got all of them to give me their business card. I put them in a hat and I told them to wait in their car. If I see you before it's time, I'm taking your name out of the hat and I'm not going to give it to the person that had the claim. So I think we're on the right path there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and that's it for today.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions hearing done?
Thank you, sir, appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys.
Yep. Next is Tim Phelan with the Connecticut Retail Network. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
And now for something completely different.
Yes, I must say, this is not often here in this committee, so it's good to see some of my friends and all of you today. Good morning, I'm Senator Gaston. Representative Boyd, ranking members, Chickarella and Senator Chickarella and Representative Howard, other members of the Public Safety Committee. I'm for the record, I'm Tim Phelan, President of the Connecticut Retail Network. We're a statewide trade association representing thousands of Connecticut retailers, large and small, all across Connecticut. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on Senate Bill 321. The Connecticut Retail Network supports Senate Bill 31321 because its passage is in the best interest of consumers, retailers, employees and public safety and provides law enforcement with the tools they need in the public interest. As the Division of Criminal Justice explained in their testimony, organized retail theft is defined as a large scale theft of retail merchandise with the intent to resell stolen items for financial gain. Often this involves a criminal enterprise utilizing groups of individuals to steal large quantities of merchandise from multiple stores across several jurisdictions. They correctly point out that such theft impacts not only retailers, but all of our citizens. Senate Bill 1321 is needed and necessary updating Connecticut's existing statute to respond to increasing threat posed by organized retail crime, including new wrinkles in ORC that we've that have appeared recently. These issues are prevalent nationally and of concern here in Connecticut. First and foremost, legislation would make it easier for the office of the Chief State's Attorney and of the Attorney General to prosecute cases, which is absolutely essential. We appreciate the efforts of both offices and work closely with them on the serious issues presented by organized retail crime. We're grateful for their dedication and determination to respond to the concerns that ORC represents and share their interest in passage of Senate Bill 1321. Because as they indicated, the provisions included is included in the legislation will assist law enforcement in addressing emerging criminal trends, targeting retailers and are aimed at curbing what has become rampant retail theft problem. Specifically, the legislation goes beyond what has been the essential elements of organized retail crime to include an emerging concern, gift card fraud. As you know, retailers respond to consumers by making gift cards available to their customers, which are very popular. At the same time, retailers are aggressively doing everything possible to prevent fraud. But it's become clear that law enforcement agencies need stronger laws to respond with us. Retailers are proactively training employees to identify gift card scams and tamper gift cards and assist consumers in spotting signs of fraud or gift card tampering. But more needs to be done. We think this bill is a step in that right direction. So in summary, the proposed legislation is in Connecticut's best interest. The methods and tactics used by those involved in organized retail crime are broader than ever. And it's imperative that today's laws encompass those methods and tactics in Connecticut's response. And as the legislation moves forward, we look forward to working with members of this committee and members of the law enforcement community to revise any language as necessary to accomplish our common goal. Thank you for your time and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony and bringing this this issue forward for us to discuss. Not to put you in a spot, is there a? What is one rising trend in particular? I know you mentioned gift cards. But as as we're looking at this and we're not having the tools needed, you know, what are some of the most common things that are that are happening that necessitates this type of legislation?
Well, clearly, the bill does two things. First, it updates what a definition of retail organized retail crime is. And I think that's one trend that has been developing. Organized crime is now not just taking place in stores, it's taking online as well. So the updating of the statute in Senate Bill 1321 allows law enforcement to go after online activities as well. And and the definition of a of a crime around a gift card fraud is is also important, as I laid out. I would just say that in the last five to 10 years, organized retail crime has gotten more prevalent. It's gotten more aggressive. It's gotten, quite frankly, more violent than it was when we first asked the legislature to define what organized retail crime is, maybe 15, 20 years ago. We're seeing it nationwide and and Connecticut with its proximity to, you know, I-91, I-95, its ease of getting in and off of exits has made us a target. And 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 it's across the board in all types of retail. It's not just one particular retailer, it's not just home improvement, it's not just.
So there's not one thing in particular that that is, it's just the across the board, the in the organized part of it as opposed to just cards or just, you know, preying on older people.
That's right.
You know, that type of.
Yeah, cards are new, which is why we were asking for this bill. But but retailer, we represent a diverse group of members as part of our association. We have, you know, as I mentioned, we have some of the world's largest retailers in the state's Main Street merchants and that that goes across types of retail, from apparel to hard goods, to soft goods, to all types of retail. And they're all facing this particular challenge.
Yep, Senator.
Thank you and thank you so much for your testimony. I have some more specific questions as well because, I mean, you're kind of talking about kitchen sink issues here that everything is kind of being considered to be organized retail crimes. I want to know, is there any data to suggest that there are specific kinds of crimes that are happening with respect to the organized retail crime? So is there more of home improvement stuff, you know, being taken? Is it more of something else? To say that is a lot of these things without specificity makes it a little bit difficult for me to try to digest and comprehend. And then lastly, with respect to Connecticut, is it happening in specific places in Connecticut? Is it happening more frequently in Stanford or some other area of Connecticut? Or is it happening more so in our inner cities? If you can kind of pare down that a little bit for me to understand and for me to digest, I would appreciate it. Thanks.
I'll do my best, Senator, but I will say that some of the, there's reams of data. We have to get you that data. It's hard for me to, you know, give it to you right now. But because this issue is becomes so important for the industry, I have with me an organized retail crime investigator from one of the major retailers that has day to day experience in dealing with it. All retailers are taking, you know, as much steps as they can to prevent it and are also gathering lots of different information. So I will get that data to you. But again, the definition of organized retail crime is two or more people working together. And that's what that's what this is about. This is no longer simply shoplifting. To your question about locations and whether it's in certain specific areas, I don't know the answer to that. Again, I'd have to get back with our folks and 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 gather that information for you, but we certainly will do that.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. Other questions from members of the committee? Questions from members of the committee? Go ahead, Representative.
Thank you. I'm just curious, and perhaps this is a better question for the Chief State's Attorney's Office, but what are the inadequacies of the current larceny statutes? Why wouldn't the current crimes that we have in statute for larceny, conspiracy? Excuse me, I'm sorry. And some other crimes be able to cover these offenses?
I think that's a really good question. I think you probably best to get the best answer from asking them. We've had good communication with the Chief State's Attorney's Office. I think one of the challenges from our perspective is getting prosecutors to take serious the the crimes that are committed in our stores. I think there's a, there was a thought that this was common shoplifting and is no longer common shoplifting. As I mentioned, it's now much more organized, much more aggressive. And I think the Chief State's Attorney's Office is doing as much as they can. We've had good communication with them. They're using different statutes to prosecute different cases. And I think the the effort to in this bill is to update the ORC statute to make it easier for them to use that to make their prosecutions. But as to why they're not now for any specific reason, I don't think I'm qualified. I think we should talk to them about that. And I think they even had, I think Representative Howard had mentioned it earlier, they have some suggestions on how to make this bill better for them. And our instinct is to support that. Because what we need are partners throughout the this process. We need, we need partners in law enforcement, we need partners in prosecutors offices. So if they have suggestions on how to make this bill easier or better for them, we we support that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm just thinking in terms of getting to the prosecutors, right? It's there's got to be an arrest made first.
That's correct.
Unless it's some big investigation that the prosecutors are heading up. So I don't know how, in terms of enforcing this, in terms of a police officer, if they're going to be able to to see the pattern in several instances, right? If you have, I'm so sorry. If you have, let's say, one suspect, right? Who or a group of suspects who are engaged in this pattern of behavior and the store calls and an officer arrives, that's one instance. And the next day, the officer arrives, that's another instance. So there would have to be some coordination because otherwise the prosecutors are just going to be getting a bunch of cases where it's one instance, they sold several hundred dollars, the next day they sold a couple hundred, right? So I'm just wondering in terms of enforcing, if this is going to be any better? And not that I oppose it, but I'm just wondering how.
Well, I think those are.
How it'll be enforced.
Those are really good points and you bring up in in terms of the work that we have to do as retailers to build those cases. It takes time. As I mentioned, one of my colleagues here works on this. She can talk to you about the effort that goes into building a case to present to law enforcement to say, we've been tracking this behavior and we've been following this or these individuals and we present a case. And then law enforcement does what law enforcement does and then prosecutors prosecute. So it's in our, we have to do our job, which is to work with law enforcement, make sure we're giving them up to date information, sharing with them important information, building trust, all the stuff that we try to do every day. And and what we're hoping for in this bill is that we'll be able to update their skills, their tools that they can use, not skills, but their tools, so that they can, you know, help us in this in this effort to curb this this problem that we have. But we understand our role in that and that is to to gather the information and that's what across the board, as I mentioned earlier to Senator Gaston, all types of retailers have asset protection, loss protection, organized retail crime folks working for them. And that's part of their job is to is to make sure that they they can build a case, bring it to law enforcement and then have it prosecuted. As and and the obvious benefits of that are that, you know, we we act as a deterrent to this to continue because the increasing, you know, use of organized retail crime is is harmful, not just to the retailer, but it's harmful to consumers and it's harmful to our employees. I mean, you know, we have folks that go to work for this every day and don't want to have to be, you know, worried that, you know, folks are going to come in and and cause havoc in their store by by stealing products. So, you know, everybody wins when we can, when we could stop this from taking place. And that's the goal of this bill.
No, I agree. I just think that there there's going to have to be some work done on the law enforcement end and the prosecutor's end because these are going to be fairly sophisticated. These aren't one offs, right? This is kind of like a burglary spree in a neighborhood. Where they can either be prosecuted as the spree or they can be prosecuted as six different burglaries, right? So I just, I appreciate everything you said and I just think we just have to consider that end of it, which isn't, isn't the scope of your responsibility.
No, but but I do think we, as an industry, we we feel a sense of responsibility to make sure we have good partners, that we have good relationships with good communication, that we do our best to work closely with law enforcement so that so that it takes place.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Representative Howard.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim. So listening to this, a couple of things. One, the section one of the bill largely talks about gift cards, right?
Yes.
So if I were to be a computer smart person, which I'm not, but if I were and I produced 100 loads gift cards for $100 each and was able to make them work and I simply made them and own them, have I committed a crime in the state of Connecticut, do you know?
Well, did you steal the gift card?
No, I created them in my house.
You purchased them at a.
No, I made them.
Oh, you made them?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. I don't know, it's a good question. How do you make a gift card?
Well, the same way. The same computer systems that this, that the.
Yeah, I mean, I, as a layman, I would say, yeah, that's fraud, that that would be illegal.
Okay. And you said that you have, your clients are loss prevention folks. So sometimes are they finding basically that? So if I'm a loss prevention person from XYZ company and we have 10 retail locations in Connecticut and our loss prevention folks have identified a suspect who is involved in all of these, right? Are they finding that each jurisdiction is going to prosecute them individually? Is that part of the problem?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think that's where the coordination with law enforcement is critical.
Right. So in other words, because my colleague brings up a good question, right? So in other words, I guess what I'm saying is if I'm a police officer in the state of Connecticut and somebody from a retail location, loss prevention, brings me a case and says, hey, we have all this surveillance, we've done all this work. I'm just not sure right now that I would be able to, other than prosecute, maybe, maybe within that GA, sometimes you get a little lenient there. But similar to like a Rico statute that the feds would use, right? That this is, these are not six individual larceny fives. This is one major case. Is that where you're finding the problem?
Right, no, and I I would say that is where we're finding the problem. But I would also quickly add, that's where the Chief State's Attorney's Office and the state police are working with us to identify methods to do that. And in fact, the Chief State's Attorney's Office, when we met with them a couple of months ago, identified a individual prosecutor who would do that type of coordination. So I think you're, you raised a good point and I think they're they're working on that. I wish, I don't want to speak for them, obviously they're not here. But in our conversations with them and our working with them, they identify that challenge and I think are internally trying to work on that.
Okay.
Because that's, that's in essence what ORC is, is that you're moving within jurisdictions and you're working within, you know, a group of folks. And we want to be able to stop that, prosecute that. So we need efforts part of law enforcement to do that, as we mentioned.
Yeah, and I and I think, like I said to the previous dialogue, I'm not sure that our statutes actually address. And that may be the prosecutor's holdup with the gift card part. I'm not sure our statutes and our larceny fraud somewhat vague. And that's probably what the State's Attorney's Office is looking for, a little bit more up to date language. You know, for example, we have a, we have a crime of issuing a bad check. And some people, young people listening may not even know what a check is. But, you know, it would be, you could argue that that's fraud, right? If I write a check and I don't have enough, but we actually had statutes for it for a reason. So I see that they had the testimony here. I think we could work with them to achieve the goal, but I appreciate it.
I do think, Representative Howard, that was the impetus of part of this bill was to update the statute because the word we in communicating with the Chief State's Attorney's Office, they were having difficulty prosecuting under the existing definition of organized retail crime. So their suggestion was we need to update that statute to make it easier for them. They were using another statute to prosecute because they are doing some prosecutions, which we're thrilled about and we work with them about. So when we met with them, they said, you know, we're having, I really reluctant to speak for them because they're not here.
And we're not asking you to.
Yeah, but I think that was the part of the, the reason why we wanted to do the bill. They said, hey, let's update the ORC statute so we can use that instead of using some other statutes.
All right, we can work with them. I think, thanks for bringing the issue up.
Well, thank you. You, your committee raised the bill. We appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, Tim, I appreciate it, thank you. Next is Wayne from the Connecticut Food Association. Oh, Representative, turn your mic on, hold on. There we go.
I have a question for Tim. Of course.
What, do I think Brad Marchant?
He made a great statement the other night.
He did?
Yes.
Yes.
And he's Canadian and he called Canadian people wrong for booing the national anthem. So he's in my book now.
All right, good.
But question I have regarding the gift card. What's the volume of, you have statistics regarding the amount of gift cards, retail in the state, the amount of fraud?
Yeah, I mean, we could break it down by each individual company, or collectively, I think, just anecdotally, one of our member companies had a loss of close to $7 million around gift cards within the last year. Is that right? Yeah. Yeah. So 2.17... 2.17 million dollars. Around gift card fraud.
What does that represent for the state?
Just in, I think nationally. But we'll get you those numbers. Henry, there's a National Trade Association that has, the National Retail Federation, has a loss prevention, organized retail crime sort of research arm, and we can get you that information, you know, with some exact numbers.
Do you also have the amount of gift cards that are not utilized?
I don't know. I'll have to find out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Love to know that.
It's a whole different subject. Yeah, yeah. But thank you. Sorry to cut you off there. So thanks, Tim. Wayne, the floor is yours, sir.
Good afternoon to the distinguished members of the Public Safety and Security Committee. On behalf of Connecticut's food retailers and supplier network, I submit this testimony in support of Senate Bill 1321. As Tim mentioned, the bill addresses the escalating threats of organized retail theft, gift card fraud, and illicit resale of stolen goods, issues that have become an increasing burden on businesses, law enforcement, and consumers alike. Other states are taking decisive action to address similar challenges. For example, California recently passed legislation to crack down on organized retail crime by increasing penalties for organized retail crime, expanding the scope of theft laws to include more forms of trafficking in stolen goods, and offering more substantial protection for retailers. Similarly, Illinois has enhanced penalties for gift card fraud and strengthened enforcement tools for retail theft rings. In response to the rise in organized crime, states like Washington, Oregon, and Michigan are considering new bills to target the resale of stolen goods, strengthening criminal penalties, and enhancing law enforcement resources to protect brick-and-mortar retailers. Senate Bill 1321 is a critical step in combating this growing crisis by enhancing enforcement against retail theft, criminalizing the facilitation of stolen good sales, establishing stronger criminal penalties for gift card fraud, and clarifying civil liability for theft and price manipulation. For these reasons, I urge the committee to support 1321 and take decisive action against organized retail crime and increasingly sophisticated fraudulent activity. I just happened to be sitting here when Tim was testifying, and I had a couple of thoughts on Senator Gaston's question. You asked where this is happening, what these types of crimes are. They're happening everywhere. So for example, credit card skimming is happening in the Northeast. It's happening throughout the country. It was prevalent in Connecticut all around the holidays. We stood with the governor. We stood with the State Police Chiefs Association and tried to put in simple solutions for consumers not to get scammed. But these are Eastern European gangs that are literally here in Connecticut operating. So that's one form of organized retail theft. These are organized criminals, where one person is standing over, and the other one is doing the deed, happening everywhere in the state. Another form of organized retail crime is the gift cards. That's all being driven by AI. So I can take these cards. I can go into any store, pick up all of these cards, take them back, put some type of code on there, and then when, you know, your goddaughter or, you know, someone in your family goes to redeem that card, it's already been, the money's gone. So that's another one. And then a couple of other ones that are happening right now. There is some entities on the dark web where they have teams of folks that go out and steal specific items. So for example, bag shrimp, Tide, Red Bull, there are a bunch of different items, generally non-perishable items, but always frozen, always canned goods. Now, somebody is sitting back there directing this person to do that, and these people that are out there doing it are bringing these items back, and they're reselling them on the web. That didn't exist 10 years ago, to be able to do that. It's happening every day in our state right now. And then the other thing that's really interesting, and really Connecticut-specific, is we've got organized retail crime around our bottle law. The 10 cents that we have on the deposits on our bottles and cans are driving entities into our state, especially around the borders. Now, Senator Gaston, it's interesting that you say, "Where is this happening?" This is one that we can kind of identify to the Stanford, Norwalk, Danbury, New London areas, where my understanding is there's a group operating right now in the state of Connecticut that has a warehouse, and they bring up truckloads of non-deposit New Jersey bottle and cans, and they store them in Connecticut. And the folks that go out and go get the dime, they get the nickel for taking them from this storage unit, and the entity keeps the other nickel that brought them up from New Jersey. Kind of interesting in terms of, you know, we've created this ability here with the dime for folks to go out and do that. It's real. It's happening. We have people redeeming over $700, $800 a day down in Fairfield County, and all of that volume's coming from New Jersey. We have other fraud issues around Rhode Island and Massachusetts and New York as well, because it's an extra nickel to come in for the dime. Believe it or not, this law actually helps us in terms of going after those folks that aren't housed here in Connecticut, but they are pulling the strings of the people that are creating the fraud. So there are others, and we can certainly get you some stats in terms of, you know, how much this crime is rising, what some of these entities are doing. And I'd be certainly willing to put something in writing to the committee and...
No, thank you so much for that as well. So I guess my thing is, we've put a lot of burden on police officers to kind of do a whole lot of things. And, you know, at a time where, you know, we already have a shortage of police needing to really focus on other kinds of issues in the community that's happening, this is just an extra layer for them to be involved. And of course, that goes along with the duty and responsibility of being an officer. I guess the question that I have for you is, I know what we can do to strengthen the laws, but what is it that the retailers could also do to help mitigate this kind of thing from happening and not sort of put all the onus on police and try to adjudicate this through, you know, the legislative process?
First of all, I see a Waterbury police officer up there at the dais, and I have four brothers who are police officers, so I couldn't agree with you more in terms of the onus on police officers. But I thought Tim did a really nice job articulating that the retailers have some skin in this game in terms of helping identify some of these perpetrators. So I think it's a combination of working with law enforcement and giving them some of the tools that they need to prosecute some of these folks. Like, nothing would make me happier to find this entity down in New Jersey that is sending all of these fraudulent bottles and cans into our state. You know, they're costing our businesses here in the state money, and it's basically illegal what they're doing. We need to do some more work around that and get some more information on that. But that would be something where, to your point, who's going to investigate that, right? So we have our part to do. And I thought Tim did a nice job of articulating that. There are, you know, in a lot of the bigger entities, they have loss prevention departments. So they have data. They have tools. So yeah, I mean, that's certainly a rub.
So presumably, I guess when, you know, folks are engaging in retail theft, I would assume that those organizations have insurance. Do we have any data on how much resources they're able to sort of recoup from the stolen items? Or are they not recouping any of the things that are stolen?
That's a really good question. I can tell you that there's a term called shrink, which is what a brick-and-mortar retailer would say, "Hey, you know, percent and a half of my business is being stolen. It's going out the back door. It's going out the front door." I can tell you that those shrink numbers are a much larger number than they have historically been because of the ability to buy and sell items on the web. And that's what's kind of different here. And I think there was one other comment made in terms of aggregation, right? Today, I think one of the fixes in the law is that we can aggregate the amount that somebody has stolen to make the penalties more severe. So there's a reason why these other states are looking at this. The crime, the nature of the crime has changed. It's a little bit more, it's not a little bit more, some of this is online. And I think what this bill gets at is at least giving us the tools to prosecute some of those folks.
Would you say that the anecdotal evidence right now is sort of pointing to the fact that a lot of these things are happening more online than they're happening in person? Or would you say they're probably equal, about the same?
No, I would say that, you know, time-honored, you know, shoplifting has never gone away, right? Especially when you look at the price of food today, right? So people are a little bit more desperate than they might be. So we're always going to see that part of this. I think the new element, the layer on top of this, is the sophistication of the theft and their ability to do some of this, you know, from the background, right? I can send 30 people out to go steal frozen shrimp throughout the state and bring it back, and then I can resell it online. That didn't exist 10 years ago. It exists today. So I think it's that incremental layer that makes it a little bit more concerning. And to your point, I don't think that the retailers can expect the police officers to go out there and investigate this and figure it out. I think there's, you know, these retailers have an obligation on their part to do their homework and figure out that this is happening, and then provide that information to law enforcement.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Senator Chikaral?
Thank you. And really quick, just a quick question. Talked about insurance. My understanding is insurance doesn't cover that loss, right?
No.
Okay. And when you use that term shrinkage, right? It's the estimated loss, whether it breaks or it's stolen. Is that fair?
Correct.
Okay. And when deciding how much someone's going to sell something for on the retail market, putting it on the shelves, do they take the shrinkage into consideration when pricing the goods?
No, but it is part of your P and L. So no, you don't assume something is going to be stolen and price accordingly. What you do is you buy a product for X, you put a certain margin on that product and sell it for Y, and you have an understanding that a portion of your sales, whatever portion of that is, I think the industry number, and again, don't quote me on this. I'll certainly follow up with this group on the industry number, was in an about 2.5% of sales was shrinkage. So you knew that, you know, it was going out the back door, going out the front door, going out somewhere. And you know that, it's the cost of doing business. But again, Senator, I think what we're talking about here is a little bit different in terms of the sophistication of that shrinkage that we're seeing. And that person in the background that you don't see, that's not in the store stealing, but sending those folks into the stores to steal. And I think that's the real, that's the game changer. I think that's what's different.
Sure. And I totally understand that's what this is intending to do, is to be able to hold the individual accountable that are going in and stealing numerous times, and then ultimately bringing it to a fence to resell it and to really stop that from happening. But my line of questioning was coming to the cost of the goods.
Yep.
When I talk to other loss prevention professionals, you know, at the end of the day, when that number keeps rising and rising, you're either out of business, or you're going to raise the price of your goods. And we see things are getting more expensive. And I guess the question was, do you think this loss, the shrinkage percentage rising, has anything to do with the increased cost of goods? Whether it's food, whether it's, you know, tools in Home Depot, et cetera?
Not in the environment that we're into today. I mean, we're talking about, you know, food prices up 20% since 2022. And I would tell you that it is not being driven by, you know, theft in stores. What you see, and the other thing I didn't bring up, the thing that retailers are trying to do is, in many areas of the country, they're locking sections of the store down. They're just locking the store down, because we know that razor blades are a problem, and they're easy to resell, and other parts of the store are being locked down if we know that they're high-theft items and easy to fence. But no, I don't believe that, you know, theft per se has driven the price of eggs or the price of groceries to where they are. I think there are a bunch of other root factors that are driving that, Senator, personally, my personal opinion.
Thank you. And maybe the food industry may be a little bit different, but I do know individuals that own local grocery stores that did say ultimately they have to make that up somewhere. And also speaking to a lot of the, you know, home goods stores, whether it's a TJ Maxx or Lowe's, Home Depot, that it does affect the cost of the goods at the end of the day. And that was just something I was trying to get at. I'm not saying selling product is the reason that everything is so expensive, because I know it takes, it's a lot of different things that go into that calculation that increases the cost of goods, many things, right? Gas and taxes and all the other good things that we, you know, unfortunately have to deal with. But my understanding was theft and the rise in theft is playing a role in the cost of goods.
I would agree with that. There's a reason why there's a greeter at the front end of the Costco and the Walmart saying hello to you as you walk in, right? Those folks are your first line of defense in terms of trying to mitigate some of that shrinkage, and not everybody really has that ability to, you know, station. The other thing that we didn't really talk about is, is if you go into certain areas of the state of Connecticut, we've got extra law enforcement in many stores. So there's a cost associated there as well in terms of trying to keep that shrinkage down. So that happens often.
Just the last question. You brought something up. You talk about those greeters at the door, and as you walk out, they may check your receipt.
Yeah.
And I'm sure every, you know, company has a different policy, but I'm assuming they're pretty much the same. If somebody were to walk right by that person checking their receipts, what could that person do?
In today's environment, not a lot.
That's what I thought. That's exactly what I thought. Well, thank you very much for enlightening us and, you know, informing us what you guys are dealing with in the industry. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator. Any other questions from members of the committee? Any other questions? Henry, anything though? Okay. All right, very good. Well, thank you for your testimony. You helped fill some gaps in.
Thank you so much.
So is there anybody else who wishes to testify before the committee? Anybody else?
Saying none.
With that, we adjourn the committee. Thank you.